Mic check for the YouTube stream. Mic check for the YouTube stream. Good afternoon. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety is amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. My name's Larry Clay and I'll be chairing today's session. Panel members today are Eric Ho, Nancy Omen, Asif Khan, Anne McCauley, and our Deputy Secretary Treasurer is Nicole Ivanoff. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is a traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Inishna Beg, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Matisse people. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx. The meetings are also streamed on Toronto City Planning YouTube channel and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer or telephone and have the option of participating via video or audio only. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body or in some limited circumstances to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons, and public bodies are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. Today I'll call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the Chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I'll comment when you're reaching the five-minute mark. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept new materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address and please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first to make a presentation to the committee. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we call on speakers in the hearing room first and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation and when all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion and the application will be taken into committee for a decision. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are there any files to be closed this afternoon?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and panel members. There are no files to be closed or withdrawn this afternoon.
Hey, do we have any, anyone have a declaration of interest for any items this afternoon, staff?
None from staff.
And do we, we do have a deferral request?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Item number thirteen municipal, oh, sorry about that. Item number twenty-two, I was reading the morning. Item number twenty-two, municipal address of thirty-three Hunts Mill Boulevard and file number A zero zero three one slash two five S C. There are no registered speakers to this item and we have the agent online.
Right. Hang on a sec while I call it up. Twenty-two? Okay, to number twenty-two is thirty-three Hunts Mill Boulevard. This is an application to legalize and maintain the existing walkways constructed without a building permit on each side of the front yard driveway. Existing two-story detached dwelling on the lot will be maintained and unaltered. Okay. Uh, do we have our agent? Good afternoon.
Yes, I'm here. Good afternoon.
Name and address, please, sir.
Uh, my name is Yunren Yan. Address is thirty-three Hunts Mill Boulevard, uh, located in Scarborough.
Uh, sir, you're asking for a deferral, can we, uh, get a reason for that?
Um, so the, uh, planner has a device that we can work together to increase a bit of the soft landscaping. Um, I don't have, uh, we don't have enough time to do a side meeting, so, uh, we would like to deferral it and then we can have some time to meet up and then come up a better idea that accommodates me and also the cities.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's go into committee. Uh, does anyone want to move deferral, Eric?
Thank you, Chair. Through you, I move a deferral of this application in order to allow the applicant more time for discussion with community planning.
Okay, motion by Mr. Ho to defer, seconded by Mr. Khan, all in favor. You have your deferral, thank you. Okay, we resume with item seventeen. This is ninety-six Cedar Bray Boulevard. This is an application to alter the existing one-story detached dwelling by constructing a partial front, second-story addition, a partial rear two-story addition with basement and a secondary suite. Committee has before it, uh, location map, plan of site survey and plans, tree and site photos. We have staff report from urban forestry and the TRCA. Do we have our agent?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have the agent online and we have a number of speakers in the audience.
It's working. Location map, plan of site and survey and plan. Tree and site photos.
So, ma'am.
Sorry, sir, sorry, sir. Hold on here. Uh, is, can, is the agent online?
We have a number of speakers in the audience.
That was Nicole.
Hello, yeah. Yeah, I'm the owner for the ninety-sixth Cedar Bray.
Sir, we're having, sorry for interrupting, we're having difficulty hearing you. Uh, if you have more than one device open, could you close one of them?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm the owner for the ninety-sixth Cedar Bray.
I'm sorry, sir. You're really jumbled and we, sorry, sir, for interrupting. You're really jumbled and we can't, we can't make out what you're saying.
Through the Chair to the agent, you might have the YouTube volume up on your end, on your computer, if you could turn that off.
Yeah. I'm sorry, sir. You're really jumbled and, sorry, sir, for interrupting. You're really jumbled and we can't, we can't make out.
Through the agent, you have YouTube on, you need to turn that off. And for the record, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, the speakers that have walked in the audience, they've now indicated they no longer wish to speak to this application.
Hello.
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 Hello, sir.
Yeah, yeah, I'm Peter, yeah, I'm the owner for the, for the ninety-sixth, uh, center pro- center provide, yeah.
Okay, can I have your name, please?
My name is Peter Fu, Peter Fu, yeah, my name is Peter Fu. I'm the owner.
Okay, so you're speaking on behalf of yourself, I guess. Um.
Yeah.
Uh, sir, we, is it?
Yeah, I'm through.
Hold on a second, sir. Is there anyone still in the audience listening to this item? They've, they've all left.
Through the Chair, they're in the audience, the speakers, but they wish no longer to speak to this item.
Yeah, I'm, uh, as a courtesy to those who have shown up, I'm gonna ask for a short presentation, please. From the.
Okay, actually, for the, for the, for the new site and, uh, we have a setback, which is, uh, not allowed for the existing building, not, not build, not allowed to do anything. So, we apply for the, built the second floor, second floor on the existing garage, which is a small area, that's it.
Okay, so the setback's only related to the, uh, area over the garage? Okay? All right, thank you, panel, any questions of the speaker? Okay, let's take it into committee. Anne?
Yes, this is a, excuse me, this is a small applica- or a, a really minor application. Uh, his setback is, uh, looks like a large, but the, the lots on either side of him are also setback, so in order to be in line with them, he requires an existing building setback. It's the only, uh, variance he needs. He's got comments from, um, TRCA, um, and there's no forestry conditions.
Okay, are you?
I'm prepared to recommend approval, move approval.
Okay, uh, motion to approve by Ms. McCauley, seconded by Mr. Khan, all in favor. You have your approval, thank you. Item number eighteen. Fifty-two Bellamy Road South. This is an application to alter the existing three-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear three-story addition, a rear second-story deck, and a rear third-story deck. The existing rear deck will be demolished. In this case, the basement floor is considered the first story. Committee has before it. Um, the, uh, location map, plan of survey, revised site plan, floor plans and elevations received on March twenty-fourth, redline public notice from the applicant received March twenty-fourth, Arbus report, cover letter from the agent, revised cover letter from the agent received March twenty-fourth, presentation materials from the agent. We have a report from urban forestry and five form letters in support from ninety, uh, Colonel Avenue, forty-one Glenmere Drive, forty-seven fifty and fifty-four Bellamy Road South. We have our agent.
Yes, I'm here.
You have your name and address, sir.
Yes, my name is, uh, Matt Winter and I'm the owner, the agent, and architectural designer responsible for the renovation in addition. Uh, my address is eighty-eight Glen Davis Crescent.
All right, Matthew, I'm just gonna, uh, ask you to take us through the public notice and flag the changes that you're making in the variances.
Okay. Yeah, so we, uh, we received an email, um, on March twenty-first from Assistant Planner and Community Planning, who voiced their concerns about the size of the two platforms in the project, um, on the back facade. Uh, so that same day revised the platform sizes based on their suggestions and sent it back to them. Uh, so the fourth item there, um, has been removed, uh, completely as we're, uh, we're complying with the four square meter size and we've reduced the, um, size of the platform in item three, based on their suggestions as well, to ten point five square meters.
Okay, so you're changing variance number three and variance number, you're eliminating variance number four?
Correct.
Okay, now all the rest stay the same?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Panel, does anyone need any further presentation on this one? Are you okay? All right, sir, we don't need a full presentation on this application. We're gonna take it into committee. Is there anything further you'd like to add to the committee before we do that?
No, unless there's any questions, I can run through the presentation, otherwise, uh, I'm okay.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? No questions? Okay, we have no questions, so we'll take this into committee. Asif?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, sir. Uh, I, I have now five, uh, variances. So, there's a modified variance number three, which is ten point five. Variance number four is deleted. And, uh, all those variances are minor. They meet the four test. Therefore, I move that this application be approved with forestry conditions.
Forestry condition number two?
Yes, sir.
Okay, motion by Mr. Khan to approve subject to forestry condition, seconded by Ms. McCauley, all in favor. You have your approval, sir.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Uh, item number nineteen, Nicole, do we have the agent available?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We'll just have staff check if the agent is online. Through you, Ma- Mr. Chair. It appears the agent is having trouble connecting, they're not here at the moment, so I recommend we stand this one down and move to the next item and we'll circle back.
Okay, I know that there are a number of people wanting to speak to this item, so you just ask for your patience while we connect with the agent and we will come back to this as quickly as we can. Okay, we skip to item number twenty. Thirty-three twenty-five Elsmere Road. This is an application to construct a new two-story detached dwelling with a front porch, rear basement walkout, rear ground floor deck, and a rear second-floor balcony. The existing two-story detached dwelling and detached garage will be demolished. There will be a total of two dwelling units on the lot and also to construct a new oversized driveway on the east side of the lot. Committee has before it, uh, location map, plan of survey and plans, decision number B thirty-three slash ninety-two affecting the subject property, uh, site and tree photos, presentation materials from the agent. We have staff reports from Transportation Review and Urban Forestry. Okay, do we have? The agent?
Yes.
Oh.
I'm here, sorry.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, company members.
We have some folks who want to speak to this item, so we'll need a sh- a short presentation, but first your name and address.
Absolutely. Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, company members and company staff. My name is Hamid Behesht from Homeland. I am the co-designer of the house from forty-nine White Cliff Crescent in Toronto. Uh, in order to, for me to present, I would like, uh, to ask for slide number one to be shown, please. Can you hear me, possibly? Right, uh, here in this diagram, uh, you will see, uh, we actually studied for forty houses of the, uh, approved decisions of the immediate area of the subject property, among which we found fifteen houses, which all have asked and been approved for the increased FSI or Floor Space Index. Those, uh, increased FSI, approved FSI's can be seen in the FSI column highlighted in yellow. Uh, to make it simple and understand the subject better, I would like, uh, uh, to see slide number two, please. Okay, here is the summary of that chart you just saw. Uh, we studied an area surrounded by Elsmere Road from the north, Watson Street from the east, and Military Trail from south and west. Uh, and those fifteen houses, uh, which, uh, asked and been approved for increased FSI can be seen here in blue dots with the subject property at the left of the, uh, slide in, uh, green dot. So, this shows that the increased FSI are very common and routine in the area and absolutely necessary for the design of newer homes. Uh, kindly, uh, show slide number three, please, which is related to second item of our hearing today. And that's, uh, in regard to the reduced front yard setback for this house. Uh, quite honestly, the twenty-five meter or huge eighty-two feet of the required front yard setback from center line of the street, uh, seemed too much for me from the very beginning of the design process. So, I was, uh, thinking of a better solution, something which make more sense for the front yard setback. And I remember the, uh, regular front, front yard setback requirements of the vast majority of the residential areas of the Toronto zoning by law, which is asking for the average of the two neighbors. As a result, I simply draw a line, connected the corner of the house at two Miro Court at the east side of, uh, this house, the one you saw at the top, uh, you, you're, uh, seeing at the top of the, the site plan, and connected to the corner of the other house at thirty-three twenty-one Elsmere Road, the one you can see at the bottom of the drawing. And I came to the slanted line, which can be seen in color red. And that, I believe, is the, uh, suitable front yard setback for this property. So, uh, eight, uh, twenty-two meters versus twenty-five or seventy-two feet versus eighty-two. Uh, the second, uh, major reason why I pushed this building to the front a little bit is trying to solve the, uh, sorry, to save the beautiful, healthy trees at the backyard of number four Miro Court, the ones which you can see in color green here. And I managed to save all of them and just one single tree is affected, which is fortunately, uh, belongs, it's a private tree belonging to the proposed house. So, no neighbor tree is gonna be affected. Um, so finally, if I can, uh, see slide number four, which is, uh, in relation to the third and final minor variance here. And that is related to, uh, widened driveway, slight widening, um, the, actually, the existing, uh, driveway of the house is at the right side or, uh, west side of the property. It's an ugly long driveway which goes all the way to the backyard. Uh, I considered the location of the tree in the front yard, which is the only beautiful, healthy tree here, and I wanted to save it. So, as a result, I proposed a driveway on the other side of the property, which is far away, away enough from this, uh, tree. And I just, uh, uh, increased the width from like three ninety-six to almost five and a half meter because, uh, obviously, we're, uh, dealing with a property which is fronting a major street of Elsmere Road, a street which is no parking. And also, right in front of this house, the no parking signs turn into no standing because of the existence of a bus stop at the corner of Elsmere Road and Miro Court. So, as a result, no car can even stop a second in front of this house. So, I simply, uh, widened the driveway to five and a half meters so that two cars can kind of comfortably be parked side by side for the, uh, guests and visitors and home deliveries and so on. Uh, I would like to take attention to the company members that by this widening driveway, no.
Five-minute mark, I wonder if you could just wrap up, please?
Absolutely. Uh, the last sentence that, uh, by doing this, uh, driveway, no front yard landscaping or soft landscaping is gonna be affected. Thank you so much. I know that some neighbors are here to speak, so I finish my presentation.
We do have some speakers here. I, I just have a question of clarification before we do. I noticed you've blocked out the floor plans on your, uh, material, which is not necessarily what we recommend. It's helpful to the panel to actually see the floor plans and in particular, when it has a balcony or something like that off. So, on the second story, you have a balcony.
That's right.
What is the room that that balcony is, uh, connected to?
Uh, Mr. Chair, that's a master bedroom.
That's the master bedroom?
That's right.
Okay. Just in future, I appreciate that architects don't like sharing their stuff, but it's helpful to the panel members to see floor plans as well.
Sure, uh, just.
Yeah, sure.
I just have a quick question. You didn't get to slide number five. It's got properties in blue around it. I don't know what it means because it doesn't say here. Does that mean they're in support or you're just showing the properties?
Right, actually, I, I was out of time. I was gonna explain that these are the affected houses, all six houses around the property.
Okay, so this doesn't mean these people are in support or anything like that?
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do we, is there anyone in the audience wanting to speak to this item? Okay, well, you can decide amongst yourselves who goes first. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon to everyone.
May I have your name and address, please?
I'm Laota Deonrain, twelve Norvalley Court. And that's directly backing this address, this.
Okay. You have five minutes, sir.
Okay. Okay, um. Oh, jeez, I forgot my.
Okay, off you go.
Okay, uh, today, I'm, I'm here to address my concerns and the surrounding neighbor concerns. This billing project at thirty-three twenty-five Elsmere Road, due to restrict, restricted time, I will focus on major problem areas such as, uh, the fire hazard concern, environmental non-compliance concern, and impact on the surrounding properties. And I might have some recommendations. Okay, first of all, I'm gonna talk about the extreme fire hazard situation this, this project is creating. There's a wooden building with, with siding finish. And it's like four feet from the rear of my property line, opening for doors and windows on the back wall. Glass is not a good fire barrier. Proposed front building with narrow side yard setback block firefighting access. The front building is, is restricted so much that firefighting people can't access the, the, the building at the back there, which is garden suite. And this picture provided to show how close the building is to my wooden deck. This will be a definite disaster case. So, I have a picture here, I don't know if you could.
Sorry, sir, if you haven't submitted it previously, we can't accept it today.
That's all right, that's all right, not a problem. But, but it's, it's like four feet away from the fence of my property line. There's also an environmental concern here, not with the non-compliance. You see, um, it's not an adequate provision for soft landscaping, that's grass. The site plan is showing eighty, ninety square feet between the garden suite and the rear property line. If you pull up the, um, there's a site plan, I think you have that on file. If you look at it carefully, eighty, ninety square feet of that is, is, is allocated for soft landscaping. The yard is mostly covered with building, paved areas does not support soil seepage or infiltration. Because building is about four feet from my backyard, it will become a swamp and a wat- and, and the water hydraulic pressure on my basement wall will lead to leakage. Project need to provide more contribution to green space for oxygen production. This site plan does not reflect what is, what is in place on the property. Eighty, ninety square feet soft landscape landing is a, is a requirement. So, this number is in the general notes and show on site plan. To mislead, the conditions are not so, are satisfied. It's a misleading, and, and this thing here, we are looking at, at the back there, you have a green space provided of eighty, ninety square feet. If you divide it by fifty-two feet, what are you getting? You can get a thirty-six feet backyard from the garden suite. So, this is in error, major error. Okay, now I'm gonna talk about the impact on the surrounding properties. It's consistent with the character of the neighborhood. Nobody wants to accept what is going on here. I have, um, about seventeen votes against it. Private concern due to closeness to the rear and other surrounding properties. The garden suite negatively affects, uh, affects our surrounding property value. This contraption is unpleasant, obnoxious to look at. Site plan shows an area at the back of this, uh, suite for soft landscaping of eighty, ninety square feet, which I already addressed. This makes the distance from the suite to the fence about thirty-six feet. Okay, I, 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 I think I have a solution to this problem here. It's simply, simply put, if you join the two billing together, take both billings into one, this portion is looking for a fifty-six, fifty-two square feet coverage, floor area, coverage like twenty-eight, twenty-six square feet. Two floors, fifty-six, fifty-two square feet. It's, it's easily accomplished by. It's easily accomplished by making one billing instead of two billings, which will leave you with a sixty-six point three percent available area for pavement and green, and green space. So in this case, adequate green area for water seepage and oxygen production, you will have. No need for any form of minor variance or variance encroachment of ten, ten feet on public property is not, it wouldn't be required. Having one billing-
Twenty seconds left.
Okay, having one billing to be consistent with the neighborhood and the community will welcome such a development. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Panel, any questions to the speaker? Thank you very much, sir. We have the next speaker come on down.
Not a problem.
Your name and address, sir.
My name is Alex Bojewski, and I live on eight Miro Court, which is just on the side of this, what it is.
You're right next door.
Yeah.
Okay, you have five minutes, sir.
First of all, I like to call his concerns about saving trees and all these stuff so misleading that all they want, all he wants to do, put the biggest building possible with no concern about anything. Then, we are talking about widening Elsme, which will be taking away space from some of the houses or the frontage. And this guy, he wants to put up the house even closer and wider driveway. But the biggest thing is, even I know this, this is not to scale, what you got on the thing, it's by design so deceiving, because the area between the large house and the small house on this is maybe forty, fifty percent of what's behind that house. In the meantime, you're talking, they left for his own good use, so much space between the two houses, while he's putting the back house right beside the fence, four feet away, and on the top of it, there is walkout from that secondary house in the back, which will take four feet, that people won't even be able to walk on their side.
So I'm just going to ask you, what's the impact of this proposal on you? What's the impact on you?
It's just crowding everything.
It's, okay.
Yeah, it's just crowding everything. The thing is, the way the house is, it's not the way it is there. It's so close to the back fence of that house, I've been looking at it all day. So yeah, I have a concern. And on the top, there is a walkout, I think it's a kitchen, I haven't seen a floor plan, which will be at least probably four, four and a half feet, which will be right to the fence. You won't even be able to walk around. How is that possible? When I was building my house, okay, I had problems, there were so many regulations that looks like you guys have thrown everything out, just to please some of these developers.
Yeah, I know, appreciate your frustration, but I'm, the panel's mostly interested in how this proposal will affect you.
Okay, I'll be looking at this site and also, I would like to know, what are these houses going to be used for? Because the way I see it, still Scarborough, that area, is single-family dwellings. Are these guys building it? What is the floor plan that I like to see? Is it going to be twenty rooms in there, making it a student rental place? Or what is going on? What is the purpose of these buildings? What are they going to be used for? Because already, we, already we can't sleep on this area. All the houses, there are fifteen, twenty people in there or more, like you're talking five, six, seven cars in the front of houses, okay? We can't move, we can't sleep. Our quality of life is totally, so if this guy is building this house in the back there, okay, how do I know it's not going to be twenty students in there that want to party all day?
Okay, we're going to, we can ask the agent to answer that question when he speaks, okay?
Yeah, so what is the purpose of these buildings?
Okay.
That's my biggest concern. And also, why are we push, how, in case of emergency, how are people going to access, get to the back of this house? But it's, he opened by how he concerned he was about trees and all this, oh, it was going to be so good. Actually, he came in a neighborhood, some of the neighbors told me, he was trying to tell people how this is going to be so great for us, okay? It's not. It's not. Basically, it's getting so crowded, the place, you can't get out, you can't get out of my street to get out on Elsme, and whatever, we are just putting more and more people. And the way it looks to me, these houses, these two houses are not designed for somebody to live in. They're going to be rental places for somebody to be making money. At the price that we're going to be paying by not having, not being able to have a peaceful sleep or anything in the house. Because you know how it is when you get fifteen, twenty students or whatever in one house, and it's happening already on our streets there. All night they're going. So what is the purpose of these buildings? What are they going to be used for? That's what I would like to know the most, and why so close to the fence?
We'll ask the agent to answer that very question when he gets up.
Yeah, why so close to the fence? And why all these decks and all these balconies and everything that will just, people, like balconies, okay, they'll be staring right in your window. Everything is getting so close, so, but my biggest concern is, what is the purpose going to be on this building? Because to me, I think we're going to end up with twenty, thirty people living in there. Because this is a business, it's not a residential area. And far as I know, to this day, Scarborough is still single-family dwellings.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I think we have one more person here. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, thank you very much.
Name and address, please, sir.
Senator Jacobima, number four Miro Court, at the side of the house.
Okay.
Can I have the floor plan, please?
Sorry, you want, did you send something in?
No, no.
Okay.
Oh, his plan.
Oh, you want the site plan, okay.
Yeah, that's the one, okay. I asked him, he came around to my house and talked about it. I asked him now, what's the gap between the fence and the east side and the west side? He said five foot, five foot. If you look at the picture, you go from the garden suite to the end of the fence, looks like a twenty foot. To me, I am a structural engineer, I know how to measure it, but it drawings are not to scale. So that's his excuse. But the building is already there, they already built. The house is five foot away from Bruno's house. And looking, looking at me at the back of the house, that's a huge, I lost my sight, simple as that. That has to come down, no matter what. And they were building very fast. So we were talking, and also, as Bruno said, Alex said, that they are talking about the expansion of Elsme Road. So they will lose one car park right there. So we have to think about the future, not today. So think about it too. The other thing, I want to make sure, this is blocking my, my view of my house, number second house. And you, he saw all the green trees, there were so many trees on that property, were cut down last year. We didn't know why he's cutting, I didn't want to make any complaint. So since this property bought, it was a one-story building, I mean, it's a detached home, they put up a second-story building, there were twenty, twenty people living in that house all the time. They even put a side stairs into the house to go to the second floor. So if you go back to the story, I don't know whether they have a permit or not, he can see all the stairs there, everything is right there. So I don't like it, that's why I'm here to talk about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, yes?
Yeah, sorry, can you just confirm, sir, can you go back?
Come on back.
So two things, are you number four Miro Court? What's your address? I didn't catch-
Number four Miro Court, the second house on the other side.
Number four, right?
Hmm?
So did you just say that the garden suite's already been built?
Yes, it's already up in the first floor done, basement done, I mean, not inside, outside is all covered.
Okay, so the suite's there then.
Sorry.
Can, sorry, just to staff then, should this not have some component to legalize in here? Or I understand there's no, I don't believe there's any variances for it, so-
Through the chair, unless it-
Do we need anything for that or not?
Through the chair, unless it could have been built in compliance.
Right, so, okay. So it may have been built legally because they don't need any variances for what they have, that's assuming they don't. Okay, that's, those are my questions.
Dan?
Yeah, my question-
Hold on, sorry, sorry, sir. You can't speak at this point, thank you.
My question is, just again for clarity, is the two-story dwelling, is that already built?
One story already completed, Bruno stopped it.
Okay, so one story, it's under construction and they've got-
Yeah.
-one story built and the second story?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we, we at the back, we talked to Bruno, we talked to Alex, it's a neighborhood.
Okay.
Now I'm losing Bruno.
Okay. I want to comment, and I'm going to comment at this time, to Elsme Road. Elsme Road is going to be widened in terms of the pavement. But when they submitted this application, the right-of-way, the width, ultimate city-owned width of Elsme Road, probably has already been taken. So no one has commented that they need any road widening. When this application came forward, if they needed to take additional land from this property for widening Elsme Road, Elsme Road right-of-way, is really the correct term, it would have, it would have been shown. But I believe Elsme Road in this location probably is, the right-of-way width has already been widened, they already in city ownership. The pavement width will change. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
All right, well, maybe we'll ask the agent if there's, if they're aware of it.
Well, there's no, no road widening's taken off of this property when it went through.
There is a, yes, okay, there is a front yard setback variance, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the room speaking on this item? Is there anyone online?
Through you, Mr. Chair, we do have a speaker online at six Miro Court.
Yeah, yep, can anyone hear me now?
Yes, we can, if you can give us your name and address, please.
Yeah, yeah. So good afternoon, my name is Shinigoo, and I live at the six Miro Court, that's directly adjacent to the property located at the three, thirty-three twenty-five Elsme Road, where a backyard suite is currently under construction. And I also agree with what my neighborhood just mentioned. The first point would be the fire hazard, because they're built so close to my fence, especially the backyard suite. So I just concerned that would be a significant fire hazard when the fire happens that going to spread quickly to our fence and then, and then our house. And also, since they're building a two-story garden suite, so that would be some, I think the height's going to also significantly reduce the sunlight of my house. And also, those windows towards to my house going to significantly violate my privacy that I can say. And also, I think there'll be a lot noise pollution caused from that backyard suite. And I think the, another point would be, they're going to also significantly affect the property value that's surrounding to this property. And that's all what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any trees between your house and the backyard of the applicant's house?
Yeah, there are multiple trees there.
Great, thank you. Panel, any more questions?
Just to add to that, so on your property, there's trees, because I heard somebody mention trees were removed on the applicant's property. So do you, I guess, do you still have adequate buffer with trees that are there?
I still have a lot, actually, just right beside the fence, my fence, toward into this property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any more speakers? That's it. All right, sir, we'll ask you to come back. Just a couple clarification questions before you get going. So the garden suite basically looks like it's as of right?
The garden suite-
You don't have any variances for the garden suite?
Yeah, actually, I'm here just for the main house.
Yeah, for the main-
The garden suite, just-
And it sounds like there was some work being done, but it stopped, was it a stop-work order?
That's right.
Okay, so the building department came in and stopped you because you were proceeding without these variances.
Actually, it's not us, Mr. Chair, because this garden suite, already like a year ago or so, was designed by other firms and other architects. It's totally out of my scope.
So the garden suite is done, or is it?
It has been built, the basement has been built, and also the first floor carpentry has been done. But then Bruno, who is mostly affected by this garden suite-
For the garden suite, you had a stop-work order on that?
Yes.
And what about the main dwelling? Is it under construction?
No, no.
Okay, so the main-
We don't have the building permit yet.
Okay, that's fine. Just trying to get some clarity, so we understand where things are at, thank you.
Absolutely, no problem.
All right, you have five minutes to respond to what we've heard.
First, I would like to see the letter that I uploaded, asking everybody, the neighbors and everybody, for short meetings or phone calls. I think the letter is called correspondence, something like that in the file. It's just one-page letter. While the letter is going to be shown, actually, Mr. Chair, I was in the area for two or three times, and I spoke with four of the neighbors. The neighbors who spoke today know very well that I was in the neighborhood twice at least, and physically available to explain everything. Alex specifically from eight Miro could have just asked me for a short meeting, for a long meeting, and I would be able to explain him everything. So for-
Sorry, sir, please, I'm just going to ask you to hold off.
I wonder if-
No, you've had your time.
How, how, how-
Sir, I'm sorry, I'm going to ask it just to please.
You guys are corrupt.
Go ahead, sir.
Sorry, if, I wonder if I can see the letter, please.
How good everything is, you're a liar.
Sir.
For the neighbor at number eight, I just, for the neighbor at number eight Miro Court, I just would like to remind her that we don't have a site setback issue, we don't have a height variance. So I don't really understand why, why she says that the house is too close or too high or anything in that nature. We here have three clear minor variances, none of which the neighbors were against of. But after the meetings with the neighbors, I found out that everybody, every single neighbor is upset about the garden suite, which unfortunately is totally out of my control. I didn't design it, I didn't build it, I'm not a builder, I don't know what happened. Something which is misleading, as the neighbor said, is the location of the garden suite on my site plan. And that is, when actually I started designing the main house, I was informed by the owners that there is already a permit or permit in process for the garden suite. I simply asked them to provide me with a site plan of the garden suite, so I could show it on my, show it on my site plan, as simple as that. And that's the only thing I know about the garden suite. That location was based on the building permit originally issued for that garden suite. But I don't know what happened, that the garden suite is now pushed back. And it's really bad, I understand. I was in Bruno's house, it's disaster, it's like hell, like nightmare for them, especially for Bruno's house, but it has nothing to do with me or today's meeting.
All right, sir, I'm going to interrupt you there, because I want to get this fundamentally clear. So the site plan that you've given us is inaccurate with respect to the garden suite?
It is not- It, it, it is not, uh, uh, it is not consistent with what is already, uh, built.
Uh, Nicole, I'd like to get some clarification here.
Through the chair, so when this application was submitted, there was no order to comply, no violation issued at the time, the end date of this application. We had flagged this application to the applicant, they had filled out a rental housing screening demo conversion, uh, form, and they signed that there was only to be two units on this lot because staff had that question. Um, and again, there was no OTC at the time, it appears since then, a violation has been issued. Uh, but that is not what is before committee.
Right, yeah, I'm just trying to get some clarity, because I, the, the agent did indicate that it looks like the garden suite isn't where it's supposed to be. Okay.
That's correct, but when I applied for-
If that's the case, then you may have to come back for the garden suite.
Uh, not me, the, the other firm.
Or somebody.
Somebody has to come back, that's right, yeah, but just to-
I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I, I've taken up some of your time, can we just give the agent another couple minutes, please?
Uh, no problem, thank you. Uh, just for, uh, further clarification that at the time when I applied for the committee of adjustment for the main house, the garden suite construction had not been started. So this garden suite, please, everybody, I would like everybody to understand that. This garden suite is totally out of my control, out of today's meeting while the neighbors are against the garden suite. All they spoke about was about the garden suite. Just for a little, uh, further mentioning the, one of the variances which I think one neighbor spoke, I would like to see slide number six if possible. Thank you, okay. So, uh, I was not, uh, aware of road widening, and I think, thank you for, uh, Mr. McCully for clarification. Apparently, there is no road widening, uh, because if there would be, then, uh, the house at number two Miro Court would be badly affected because the setback from the central street of that house is only nineteen point seven meters. Uh, most likely, uh, furthermore, we have asked for widening the driveway and has nothing to do with the driveway's depth. So even if the road widening happens, it's not gonna affect our driveway. The driveway width, which we're talking about today, is different story about, uh, road widening. Now, uh, slide number seven, please, while I have another few seconds. Um, here in slide number seven, I showed the proposed driveway at the left side with, uh, uh, driveway width of five and a half meters. While on the right side, I showed an imaginary, uh, option of a six-meter driveway width, which could be as of right, as you could, uh, could see in the transportation report, they have no objection to the, uh, widening of the driveway in our case. Uh, and the only why we see, uh, minor variance in this regard is because of an interior design of this house. Because I have designed, uh, one-car garage, simply because the owners have one car and needed just one car. If I had designed a normal two-car garage without any extra minor variance, then I could have the driveway up to six meters wide, the thing that you can see at the right of, of this diagram. As of right, without needing to come to the committee of adjustment. So, again, I, uh, remind you that with this, uh, extra wa- uh, uh, driveway width, I don't have any front yard landscaping or lo- stuff landscaping issue. So this, uh, driveway width has nothing to do with, actually has no bad impact on anything else.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions of the agent?
Yes.
Anne?
Um, sir, I see that you are the agent and it says Homeland.
That's right.
I'm used to Homeland Realty, is that, uh, who you're representing or are you someone else?
No, no, that Homeland Realty has got two words, home, land. Our firm is Homeland, one word.
Okay, and you're not connected with Homeland Realty?
No.
Okay, the owners here are, um, Saleh, uh, I guess Mr. and Mrs. Saleh. Um, how, when did they buy this property?
I really have no idea. Uh, when I design a hu-
You have no idea when, when they bought the property, so you have no idea when they built this garden suite?
Uh, they started building the garden suite a few months ago. But I, I'm not aware when they purchased the property. Because when I start designing a, a house, I just ask questions which are related to the design of the proposed house. You know, so I don't, uh, ask when you bought it, how much you buy it, are you gonna sell it, are you gonna leave it? I don't usually just ask these questions.
And, and who is constructing the garden suite?
Um, a, a gentleman by the name of Mr. Faraz Baghiri.
Is this, uh, under the owner, Mr. Saleh?
Uh, Mr. Uh, Nazmi Saleh.
What I'm trying to get to is, was the garden suite built before these people, uh, owned it?
Oh, no, 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 no. Uh, no, 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 that-
They sold the property and these are the new people and they want to build a big house?
No, no, actually, uh, they purchased the property and first they had asked for the garden suite. The same owner, same people, ex- my clients. And then after the garden suite, they approached me to design the main house.
Okay, all right, so the, the owners, Mr. Saleh, uh, built, uh, or wanted to build that garden suite and actually went ahead and built it?
And that's correct.
Okay, and then now they want to build the big house and they have the variances in front of us for the big house?
For the main house only, not for the garden suite.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? I mean, I remind us that, uh, the, the garden suite's not before us, right? So it's just the main house.
Um, because there are no floor plans, is this gonna be a family home or is this gonna have three units? What, what's this main-
Um, a single, a single-family home. Uh, during the design process, they asked me several questions, they had several requests which clearly show that they're gonna live in it, not renting or anything else. It's just a single-family house.
Right, okay, and where are they at with, with rectifying this, I hate to harp on this garden suite, but I find it kinda difficult to approve something else when something else is there that's in limbo. So where's it at with this garden suite? Like, do, are they gonna need variances? Do you know anything?
Um, I, I was aware of this garden suite nightmare when I, uh, visited the neighbors for the main house. And then, uh-
Did you see it there when you were at the site?
Yeah, I saw it there, yeah. The first floor actually has been built.
Okay.
And then Bruno, uh, called the city and they put a stop order. Somebody had made, he, had, um, has made a mistake on locating this garden suite. It is, i- it's very clear to me that it's too close to the rear property line. I'm not aware who made that mistake, uh, probably somebody in building department just by some misunderstanding or anything. But I'm not aware, really, that's, that's the only thing I know about this garden suite.
Setback violations and other things, right, that are gonna require committee?
Quite likely. Yes, I-
So, so this is where I'm struggling, right, to approve something?
Yeah, I believe, yes, I believe either they have to come to this committee of adjustment for that front, uh, rear yard setback varian- variance or any other thing that might, that garden suite might have. Or, uh, or do some, uh, I don't know, some pushing back the first floor or something, I really have no idea. They have to do something, they cannot build what is already there, they cannot continue building it.
So this is gonna be-
And then the, but then also, I'm sorry, but you're, you're, and now you're asking for FSI. We also don't know where the FSI is gonna be at with that and, and how that's all gonna factor into everything.
Right, but, uh, FSI of, uh-
Anyway, I, I just throw those questions out. I understand that you weren't part of that equation, but unfortunately, it does factor into what we're looking at today.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, Ms. Omen, the FSI of the main building and garden suite are separate. And, uh, you know, they are two different things. There is no one FSI for the whole property.
But we do, you know, we kinda look at the context of how this all fits in the neighborhood, if it's appropriate. So even though they may be separate, you do look at it in combination of each other.
You can see the frustration, right? If you're gonna build, if someone's gonna be built something as of right, they expect it to actually conform to the bylaws. When you get the as-of-right permission and then you don't follow it, you can see how that ticks the neighbor.
Absolutely.
Right, so, I think, you know, Nancy's right.
I, I totally understand, and if you ask me-
Application. The other thing I would say to you is, to her question and, uh, to some of the comments from the neighbors, um, without floor plans, nobody knows what this is, right? So, there's a, um, a lack of understanding. And, you know, you heard some neighbors lamenting that there's a lot of rental in the area, so, you know, showing the floor plans might have, uh, avoided, uh, some of the angst that you're hearing from the neighbors.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, those, uh, floor plans were, uh, covered for two reasons. To respect the privacy of the homeowners, and also, uh, none of these variances, three variances we have it here, is related to what's happening inside the house. Everything is outside, happens.
But my point is that the neighbors-
Yes.
Will better understand what you're proposing if you're more transparent with what you're having your app-
Absolutely, I was gonna explain that, when I meet the owners, I had plenty of time to show them everything, including the floor plans. For example, I strongly believe that the house mostly affected by the main building is number two Miro Court.
Right.
The corner house. But we cannot see anybody from two Miro Court, because I spent three hours explaining them everything. So they are okay.
Okay.
Because they understand what's going on. I could have done the same thing to every neighbor.
All right, thank you very much, any further questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Let's take this into committee. Nancy?
Listen, I, I'm struggling with this, I mean, the variances upon themselves are not egregious. Having said that, with the situation of an unknown in the back and then in combination thereof, um, I would ki- I would prefer to see that sorted out and have it coming back as, as one package because I, my gut tells me you're gonna need variances for that garden suite in the back. I, I know it's not your application, but it is part of the same site. I would be inclined to, huh, to move deferral until you get this sorted out. Um, because I, I, I don't feel that in good conscience I can approve this and then there's still gonna be a lot of problems with the garden suite in conjunction with a new house that has approval. So those are my comments.
I, Anne, I agree, um, we've got a garden suite. We know that it's, if they've got a stop-work order on it, it's obviously not in accordance with whatever building permit they may or may not have, have got. So we know that, that the garden suite, the location of the garden suite, as this gentleman said, is not what is shown here even. So, uh, it becomes a big question. I, I repeat what, uh, my colleague has said about the, uh, floor plans. We prefer to see the floor plans, it gives us an idea of, uh, the scale. It, if the floor plans show that there's eighteen bedrooms, for example, and I'm exaggerating, we know that some of the concerns of the community are going to be eighteen bedrooms. If it shows that there's four bedrooms and it's a big house and this area has big houses, then that concern is addressed. So there's a reason for putting the floor plans in there. We can, uh, assure the neighbors, this is what is the application that has gone to the building permit through, and they have had a look at this and said, yes, here are the issues that we have, the three that you've talked about, and the rest of it looks fine. Now, I do, uh, raise that your FSI is three hundred and seventy-nine meters squared versus three hundred and eleven. So that is a big house, bigger than what is permitted. That's what we're looking at. It may be, we may be satisfied with it, but it's bigger than what is permitted and therefore we need to assure ourselves that bigger than permitted fits in. And that's where the floor plans help, it's where the building height helps with that information. I'm inclined to, I'm not inclined to refuse this application, but certainly defer it and suggest that they get, uh, all their ducks in order.
Great, thank you, uh, I think what you're hearing is that, you know, what, what's before us is inaccurate. So in the absence of having good, accurate information, it's hard for the panel to make a, a reasonable decision. And, uh, it may, it's not your fault, but, um, it might be best for you to go back and if you do need variances for the garden suite, it's the same owner, I think it would be good to package everything together. So I think a deferral is in your best interest. So, um, can I get a motion, Nancy?
Through you, Mr. Chair, um, everything that I stated before, um, I feel that it makes sense to, um, defer this application and I would defer it to, I would say signee die and, uh, again, as per Mr. Clay's comments, I, we understand that this is not your, you, you didn't create the problem in the back, but unfortunately, this is one site and so hopefully, um, this'll give you time to either take over that file and fix everything together or work with whoever's dealing with the garden suite and, and get, get a, an application in that col- you know, that shows everything the next time. So I'm going to deferral.
Okay, motion by Ms. Omen to defer, second by Ms. McCully, all in favor? Opposed, okay, you're deferred and you've heard the advice of panel, so, uh, when you come back, put everything together.
Thank you.
Okay. Is, uh, can we go back to the file? Not really?
Through you, Mr. Chair, the agent is still not available or present? Nineteen?
Uh, is anyone here for item nineteen? Just the two of you up there? So again, we apologize, uh, the agent for this file is otherwise engaged in another matter, so we're giving him a little bit of time to finalize his act. I know it's an imposition on you folks, but if you bear with us, we'll try and get him as soon as we can. I understand, so we apologize. You have to catch an airplane? That's why you're smiling. Okay, well, again, we'll, we'll, we'll get him as soon as we can, please have patience with us. All right, move to item number twenty-one. This is Seventy Hollis Avenue. This is an application to alter the existing one-story detached dwelling by constructing a full second-story addition, rear ground-floor deck and a rear second-story balcony. There'll be a total of two dwelling units on this lot. Committee has before it, location map, plan of survey and plans, tree and site photos. We have a staff report from Metro Links and correspondence and opposition from one oh five Eastwood. And do we have the agent?
Hi. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and dear member of committee. Uh, my name is Donia Pasiliase and I'm the agent representing on behalf of the owner of the property located at Seventy Hollis Avenue.
Great, thank you, we have someone standing by to speak to this item, so we'll need a short presentation, please.
Sure, can you start?
Yes, please.
Okay, I appreciate the opportunity to present today our proposal for minor variance regarding the floor space index and the height of the main pedestrian entrance. The permitted maximum floor space index is zero point six, uh, time, the lo- area of the lot. The proposed floor space index is zero point sixty-five. The elevation of the lowest point of the main pedestrian entrance through the front wall may be not higher than one point two, however, our proposal is one point forty-two meter above the established grade. The primary objective of the project proposal is to create a unit that can comfortably accommodate a family offering a practical and sustainable living solution for the long term. The proposed increase in the floor space index is minimal, ranging from zero point six to zero point sixty-five, which represents an increase of just seventeen point twenty-six square meter. This slight adjustment will not significantly alter the character of the functionality of the neighbor, nor will it lead to overdevelopment. The additional seventy point twenty-six square meter of the floor area will be thoughtfully integrated into the existing structure, ensuring that it complement and harmonized with the surrounding properties. Regarding to the height of the main pedestrian entrance, the proposed increase of zero point twenty-two meter is essential is to provide a- appropriate accessibility and functionality while maintaining a safe and welcomei- uh, access to the point. This is slight modification, also ensure a reasonable ceiling height for the basement unit. Importantly, this change will not defect for, from this, uh, uh, aesthetic appeal of the building or the property's direct escape. In conclusion, both of these proposed variants are minor in nature and will result in a development that align with- development that align with the overall character of the area. I respectfully request that the committee can approve these variances. I appreciate your time.
Great. Thank you very much. Do we have a speaker on this item?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have a speaker in concern online.
Hello?
Hi. Anyone hear me now?
Yes, we can. Your name and address, please, sir.
Okay. My name's Aide Bishrik. I'm owner of the next property to the concerned property. It's 105 Eastwood Avenue. It's corner house. Seventy Hollis is just next to me in the east side. I have few concerns about the proposal. The first one is the window they put in the second floor, looking into my backyard, violating the privacy. Also, not only the backyard, everything in the house will be exposed on that side. I was wondering why this window and this, okay, two windows, actually. It can be easily relocated or rearranged to the point that it doesn't make this violation. Is also the back balcony, it should be, has a barrier to prevent them from looking into my backyard too. This is for the, obviously, this one can be mitigated, but I'm wondering why it's not proposed in the right way. The other thing is the parking. It's additional separate unit. The unit, additional unit, I was looking into the planning act and I find something on the web, Ontario Regulation 299 slash nineteen regarding requirements and standards for additional residential units. It says each additional residential unit shall have one parking space that is provided and maintained for the sole use of the occupants of the additional residential unit. I was wondering how these can be neglected on the review. It's the site plan show one parking spot in the driveway, no garage. The original, I have been in my house about thirty-five years. I'm retired with my wife. That's my kingdom, our kingdom. Enjoy it with our kids and grandchildren. Now, I find some people watching me, especially that this unit is going to be up for rent. Its rental has a separate entrance. Regardless, it doesn't have a space for the additional people parking. Obviously, that make it dangerous because what they going to do? They going to park on the street, make invitation for the parking enforcement officer every day? Also, make it dangerous for me when I go out and in or anyone from my garage, blocking the safe way to do that. The third one before my time is up is the tree. The survey says that there is a tree on the front. The tree has the tree declaration, but I couldn't find on the documentation anything regarding this tree. The tree protection chart, it prevent the new building because it's interfere with the tree protection. I understand that this is something with the urban forestry. However, it's, something can be done now before we go with something like to stop the construction or something. I am requesting like refusal of the site plan as it is now. The minimum I can do is deferral for the whole issue until all of these issues mitigated or find a solution comfortably to everyone. We are nice neighbors and I like the neighbor. We have been for years and we good relation. We don't like something like this. Can be solved and just passed. I'm done. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks so much, sir. All right. If we could get the agent back, please.
Yes.
Hi. Do you want to respond to some of the things you've heard?
Yeah, for sure. So, I understand that he's concerned about the two proposed window on the west side. However, I would like to clarify that this windows, what they do provide a view toward your property also have a reciprocal view of our own backyard from your rear side building with those two windows. You have it on your rear building. So, given the nature of the residential area, it's common for properties to have a windows facing each other, even each other of the yards. The reason for the lack of the window on the other east side is largely a design consideration based on the functional and a statistic of the design. But as, in terms of the privacy, if you can see your windows on the rear one, like your windows in the rear side has a vision to the client, my client backyard too. So, I think in terms of the window, there's no reason that we just like, because we have a staircase on the other side, so we have a bedroom in this side and we need a window officially, like a nature, a natural light. Regarding to the tree, the tree definitely, we're committed to ensure that all necessary steps for taking care of the protected tree. The tree is like even the own city or the private city, private tree or own city tree. We just, there's no problem with the city regarding that tree. But definitely, we are going to take care of that during the construction time. And regarding the parking concern, so this committee adjustment proposal is regarding the second floor addition. In this house, single family unit will leave, like your old neighbor will leave the entire, like next for twenty years. They want to use the second floor only for themselves as a personal use. And the basement, regardless of the parking, is not part of this, I believe, this committee and variances. And they don't have any concern in terms of the zoning before to me. We just propose as a wider driveway in our site plan and they accept it.
Okay. Thank you. Panel, any questions? Eric?
Thank you, Chair. Through you. Agent, are you prepared to put in privacy screens on the windows to mitigate some of the privacy concerns we just heard?
Eric, you know what? Distance with the property, from the building to the property is more than two meters. So, we just comply with the zoning to have a, like a glass area. In terms of the glass area and the fire, fire department in a building process and building a step, definitely, I'm going to calculate the glass area. If the building department said you are over, exceed of the glass area, definitely, I'm going to reduce or have a, like a kind of screening for the, but you know, in terms of privacy. So, there, this neighbor has a vision to our property too with those two windows on the second floor. They already have their second floor. They had to, they have two windows there and they have a vision to our property too. So, am I asked, my client asked them to put their screen on their windows while they want to use as a bedroom? Definitely from the interior, they put a curtain, they put any like a screen in terms of the sunshine. But for privacy, do you think is reasonable? And we are over two meters to our property line.
Well, you know, you're the one here with the application, right? Where it's not the neighbor that's coming over proposing to build the new building. So, and they have concerns with the additions that you're proposing with the windows. So, my question to you really is, are you willing to put in privacy screens?
For sure. For sure. If, yes, I'm going to ask my client to make this privacy control because they definitely want to have a good relationship as a neighbors.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
No problem.
Okay. Let's go into committee. I'm not as fussed about the windows, frankly. They're bedroom windows. No one's going to be staring out their bedroom window, I don't think. Well, you never know. I guess that's true. I, you know, you can, you know, do what you want, but I wasn't as fussed about the windows. The balcony off the back, you know, maybe that might be an issue out the second floor. Might want to screen the sides of the balcony. But again, it's your, you guys can do, it's your motion, whatever you want to do. Anyone else have any thoughts on this one? No? It's yours, Eric.
Okay.
Whatever you want to do.
I will note while Eric is thinking, there's no mention of tree preservation plan whatsoever. So, I don't know where this tree is that they're talking about.
It's in the front yard. It's a coniferous tree.
Okay.
And it didn't look from the site plan like it was going to be affected by the footprint.
Yeah. And we have no comments for tree preservation requirement, so.
Okay. Over to you, Eric.
All right. Thank you, Chair. Overall, we only have two variances here. They appear minor and meets the four tests of the planning act. We heard concerns about privacies with respect to the two windows on the side and the rear balcony. And we heard the agent is prepared to mitigate those concerns by considering applying privacy screens on the balcony as well as the two windows. So, I would kindly ask the staff to put a note to this effect.
You can make it a condition.
A condition to the approval.
So, through the chair, is that a condition for a privacy screen on both sides of the rear balcony and opaque or translucent, like a film on the windows?
That's, yeah, that's a good idea. That's what I would propose.
Okay. Is that your motion, Eric?
And subject to Metrolink conditions, I believe.
Is this a condition or advisory? I get them confused.
I believe conditions.
Is it conditions?
Environmental easement and clauses.
All right.
Yeah.
Motion by Mr. Ho to approve with those conditions. Anyone want to second it? Ms. Omen? All in favor? Opposed. But it carries, motion carries. Okay. We, is, is item nineteen? Is Pankowski, is he tied up? Okay. Any idea, can we get a sense of like how long it's going to be?
Through the chair, he indicated shortly.
Shortly, guys.
Presumably, he's at the committee of adjustment in the city.
There are people also waiting to speak to this item online. So, again, our apologies to those online as well for the delay on this item. Item number twenty-two.
Was deferred?
Oh, deferred. Pardon me. Yeah, thank you. Item twenty-three. Is 263 Ellington Drive. This is an application to construct a new two-story detached dwelling with a secondary suite in the basement, front porch, front second-story balcony, rear ground floor deck and rear second-story balcony. The existing one-story detached dwelling will be demolished and also to permit an undersized parking space. So, it'll be a total of two dwelling units on the lot. Committee has before it location map, plan of survey and plans, an arborist report. We have staff reports from community planning, transportation review and urban forestry. Do we have the agent online?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have the agent online and no registered speakers for this item.
Hello. Good afternoon.
Drew Lee from Art Design Group.
Sorry.
Good afternoon. Drew Lee from Art Design.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I don't need a presentation, but I do have a question for the agent.
Sure. Does anyone else need a presentation? You guys are okay? Okay. Sir, we don't need a presentation today. We're familiar with the application and we've read the material. We are going to go straight to questions unless there's anything that you'd like to share with us before we do that.
No, I'm willing to hear the questions if no presentation is required.
Okay. All right, Ann.
Okay. Thank you. I note that your building is a new building. It's on Ellington Drive, which is a collector road in this area. And there is a platform on the second floor over the front porch. Community planning is recommending refusal of that platform on the second story. I'm not sure why they want refusal. It looks to me that the balcony on the second floor is overlooking the porch on the first floor. I looked at your floor plan, that balcony comes off of the main hall of the upstairs room. Can I have your comment on the community planning's request to reduce the, or actually refuse the balcony on the second floor?
Absolutely. I had discussions with the community planning. Their concerns was, were for privacy and overlook into the neighbor's property. I gently put it to them that this is a front balcony and there is no privacy at the front as I can stand on the sidewalk and look at the neighbor's front yard. So, I told them I would still like to proceed with as it is, understanding that they might recommend refusal of this dock, of this variance itself. But for construction ways, it's easier for us to, for structurally, for the railing, to put it on the full balcony that's covering the porch. But I did tell them if you're going to refuse it, then I guess my client will go back down to the four square meters as permissible. I did mention to them that regardless, we're allowed four square meters, which will still create that balcony to look into the neighbor's front yard. So, their concern was a privacy. And I said, there is no real privacy at the front of a house because their front yard's not fenced in. And she said, okay, we'll proceed this way anyway. So, and I said, I'll take my chances with committee on this because I don't agree with their, with their privacy issues here.
Okay. Thank you. I agree with you, sir. Not often that I agree with you. So, make it mark. But I don't, a privacy issue here. In fact, I like symmetry. It looks to me that the balcony on the second floor is about the same size as the porch on the first floor. It overlooks the road and it's at the front of the dwelling unit where people are not as concerned about privacy. So, I'm prepared to recommend approval of this application.
We're not in committee yet.
But I will not, I will not, I will not pair it with the community planning recommendation.
Okay. Before we go into committee, does anyone else have any questions?
No. I just, the comment on this, I mean, when I read the planning report, it's not so much talking about overlook. It's talking about when they looked at the rest of the area, that there are no examples of variances of that magnitude. It's talking about when they looked at the rest of the area, that there are no examples of variances of that magnitude. Therefore, they feel it's not in keeping with the characteristic of the neighborhood. So what they're saying in essence is that, you know, this, this length variance, because it's part of it, sets a precedent that they'd rather not see. So I don't know, I mean, I, I, I'm actually inclined to agree with planning because often there is no weighing in and this time there is. So I'm, I'm on the other side of the equation on this.
Can I just ask a question about the length? So just looking at the existing building, there's a garage that goes rather deep into the lot. So is, is the proposed length of the new build roughly equivalent to where that garage goes back to?
Um, I'll just kind of correlate that with the existing survey. The building length, we still need the front porch, which we have no issues with that in terms of a front porch. So the balcony, and I know they didn't write that in their report. I'm responding to a back and forth email where they, where they mentioned to me that there was a concern with the overlook on the neighbors. That's why I brought that forward. And then, yes, they did word it after with the recommendation to the city. In terms of the site plan for the existing house, the existing house currently is setback seven point five nine. It's in line with two sixty-five. And our new house is at, at the same front yard setback. So, so currently our garage, our garage door lined up with two sixty-five next door. That's where our existing house is. It's just our neighbor on the, on the other side, two sixty-one, they're setback. So our front yard setback now has this average length, right, between the two neighbors. However, where we positioned our house, it is where the existing house is. You can actually see on the site plan, the, on the driveway, the dotted line of the existing porch. So we're actually pushing the house back for where the existing porch, of porch is. So yes, if you can zoom into the front, front part of that. As you can see where my words are, nine point nine average front yard setback. And you see the dotted lines of a staircase and the front porch, that's our existing house. And we are pushing it further back. So where our garage starts is where the existing house starts.
Right, I'm, I'm more interested in the rear, how, how the length and its impact on the rear. Right, so you're asking for a variance for length. And I'm trying to get a sense of relative impact of that extra length. Is it roughly equivalent to how far the house goes back? To Nancy's point about setting precedent and everything else. I just want to get a sense of, is it incrementally more, deeper or longer relative to what is there now?
It ends where our existing deck ends. Our new house ends where the existing deck ends. So we have a veranda, like an enclosed back porch on the existing house, and then there was a deck. So we extended it back to the deck. And we're asking for ten point eight three meters of that. Oh, sorry, we still have a, a ten point eight three meter backyard, which is in compliance. But the, the request, the refusal was for just the front porch, for the front balcony, as I understand, not the building length.
I get that, I've moved off that. I was more interested in the length. Because you're asking for a significant variance to the length.
We're asking point six nine. We're asking for point six nine.
Well, variance number five says the maximum permitted length is seventeen meters. You're asking for nineteen point six nine. That's two point six nine meters longer than the.
Oh, for the length.
Right?
Yes, you are correct. Sorry, I'm thinking duplex mode in my mind, which allows nineteen, you're correct.
I understand that, I understand that. So that's why I'm just trying to get at the relative impact of that extra length compared to what is there now.
Right, so we, so where the existing house is, ending up in the back, which is that enclosed veranda, we're just extending it another eight feet to where the deck ends. But we have pushed the house back as well because our porch was more encroached in the front of the house and we've pushed the house back.
Okay.
To where the existing building is, yeah.
Thank you.
Can I just, uh, I believe this house backs on to, I think it's the Greek church to the north. So there's nobody to the north.
That's helpful. That's helpful.
That's correct. And there's a Costco behind there, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay, any further questions? All right, let's go into committee. Who wants to take this one on?
Well, I, I'm just gonna comment and move the motion, but that I, I, if I were to support this, it would be including the planning condition. That's, that's my position on this.
Reducing the size of the balcony?
Yeah, I mean, the house is quite long, like when you look at it in comparison to either side. So I see no reason why you need a bigger balcony on the front. I mean, a Juliet balcony to me makes sense. So I would, I would, I would want that, so basically variant six gone. It would be deleted.
Right, because they would be in conformity.
So I would, I guess refuse variant six would be.
All right, do you want to try a motion to that effect?
I think Anne was gonna move a motion and I just wanted.
Would that be consistent with what you would say?
No, I don't see the problem. The existing house has a porch out the front. It's one-story house. I don't see a, a privacy issue, which is, is really what you, I would look at in terms of a, a front yard with a balcony on the second floor. So, you know, it, it was interesting to hear whether the applicant is willing to concede. If he's willing to concede, fine, no problem. But I think this has pushed the, the, um, I think this has pushed the condition a little bit more than what is necessary. It's a brand-new house, it's in an area that's going to, going to change. I don't see a problem with implementing the community planning issue.
Okay, do you want to move a motion to that effect?
So I will move a motion recommending approval of this application as is.
It's forestry one and two?
Subject to forestry, conditions one and two, thank you.
Okay, okay, motion by Ms. McCauley to that effect. Do I have a seconder? Uh, Mr. Khan, seconds, all in favor? Opposed? Ms. Omen opposes, that motion is carried, the application is approved. Alrighty. Mr. Benkovsky, not here yet? Item number twenty-four. Three, four, four, one to three, five, nine, five, Lawrence Stave East, Unit two B. This is an application to permit an amusement arcade and recreation uses, which is in this case a children's playground in Unit two B on the second floor of the existing two-story commercial building within the existing commercial shopping center, which is Cedar Bray Mall. The commercial unit is currently vacant. Committee has before it. Location map, plan of survey and plans, planning rationale letter from the agent, this previous decision numbers affecting the subject property, an arborist report, presentation materials from the agent. Is the agent online?
Through you Mr. Chair, the agent is online and there's no registered speakers for this item.
Thank you. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, committee members. My name is Alex Savenu, Senior Associate Planner with Bowsfields, three Church Street, Toronto. I do have a presentation and some materials, but I'll, I'll maybe defer to you if you would like me to go through those or not.
Thank you sir. I don't think we'll need a presentation today. Looks like it's a pretty straightforward application. We've read the material, we're familiar with what the application contains. Is there anything you'd like to share with the panel before we take it into committee?
No, thank you.
Great, thank you. Let's go into committee, this is very straightforward folks. Uh, Ms. McCauley?
Through.
Oh, sorry, I'm getting whipped last year. I'm gonna go Eric because Anne.
Okay, fine.
Okay, um, through you Mr. Chairman. I, excellent, the covering letter was very, very explanatory. I think that if you were gonna put this anywhere, this is a really good location for it. So I think it meets the four tests and I would move approval of the application.
Motion to approve by Ms. Omen, seconded by Mr. Ho, all in favor? You have your approv, oh, pardon me, all in favor? Opposed? Mr. Khan opposes, but the motion carries, you have your approval.
Thank you.
Mr. Benkovsky is running out of time.
I know. Like.
Through the chair, he has indicated fifteen minutes. So.
Okay.
We do, we can hear, item twenty-five has no registered speakers. And then perhaps if members wanted a quick break since we've been going for over an hour and a half, that's an option as well.
Okay, let's carry on for the time being. Item number twenty-five. Sixty-two Seminole Avenue. This is an application to alter the existing one-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear deck and rear basement walkout and converting the existing carport into habitable space. There will be a total of four dwelling units on the lot, also to permit the reduction of lawful parking space and the relocation of a parking space to the front yard. Committee has before it, public, sorry, location map, plan of survey and plans, tree site photos. We have staff report from transportation review and from Metrolinks. There is correspondence and concern from sixty-eight Seminole Avenue. Do we have the agent? Online?
Through the chair, the agent is online.
Good afternoon, sir. Hello?
Good afternoon, sir, how are you doing?
Fine, thank you, your name and address please.
This is Sham Sayed with McQuays Inc., the authorized agents on behalf of the property owners for sixty-two Seminole Avenue.
Okay guys, this one looks fairly straightforward to me as well. Does anyone need a presentation? Okay, sir, we don't need a presentation today. We've read your application, we're familiar with the material. Is there anything you'd like to share with us before we take it into committee?
Just in regards to the concerns raised by our neighbors. So in regards to that letter, I'd just like to point out that the property owner will be living on property after the building permits and the construction is done. So they wouldn't face any hardship in terms of keeping the property neat and tidy. And yes, a thorough screening will be done for any tenants coming in the future so that everyone lives harmoniously in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions panel? None? All right, let's take it into committee. Who wants this one? Asif, you want to take this one on ma'am?
Four variances in front of us and Transport Services has no objection in their letter of April second, twenty twenty-five. And no staff recommendation. And Metrolinks has. And I would move this application be approved.
Okay, motion by Mr. Khan to approve, seconded by Ms. Omen. All in favor? You have your approval, thank you. Asif, can we do one more before we take a break and then?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, we will do.
Thank you.
Item twenty-six?
Yeah.
Eighty-nine Claremore Avenue. This is an application to construct a new two-story detached dwelling with a secondary suite in the basement, front porch, front second-story balcony, rear ground floor deck and a rear second-story balcony. The existing one-story detached dwelling and detached garage will be demolished. Committee has before it copy of location map, plan of survey and plans, tree site photos, presentation materials from the agent and a staff report from urban forestry. We have the agent.
Through you Mr. Chair, we have the agent online and we do have a couple of speakers here in person.
Ah, okay. All right, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and the committee.
Have your name and address please ma'am.
Uh, my name is Nishrat Jahan, address three, four, zero, zero, Danforth Avenue, suit number five.
All right ma'am, there's a couple of people who want to speak on this item, so we'll need a short presentation? Yes?
Um.
Hold on a second.
Hang on one sec, well, I, can you ask if she, I read something about reducing the FSI? Can you just clarify if she's doing that?
Oh, are you changing any of the variances here today?
Yes, sir, so we are amending gross floor area and FSI, we are reducing. It was three fifteen point nine two as far later zoning notice, but then we went to the zoning examiner again and she re-reviewed and found out that one of the parking spaces were not excluded. So now it came down to two ninety-nine point one four and the GFA square meter and FSI came down to point five nine. And we do have the revised zoning notice with, with us. I, I sent it to the committee staff Shirley Line yesterday because we received it yesterday.
Through the chair, that's a late submission, so we wouldn't be able to show that on the screen. So the agent will need to speak to the public hearing notice. Staff, if you can kindly pull up the public hearing notice and to the agent to clearly identify, so which variance are you amending?
Uh, we are amending cross-floor area, GFA and FSI.
So this is, so can we just pull up the, is it up? Yes, we're just gonna pull up the public notice, this is variance number two. So we just want to make it abundantly clear that everyone knows what the changes you're making. So the second sentence is what you're amending. Could you just read that with the correct, corrected numbers for us please?
Yes, so we are amending GFA as two ninety-nine point one four square meter and FSI as point five.
Okay. It's your terminal a little bit. So you're basically saying the new dwelling will have a floor space index equal to point, zero point five nine times the lot area and the lot is two hundred and ninety-nine point one four meters, is that correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Chair.
Yes ma'am.
Item number one, if staff would take a look at it, I think there is an error. The front and rear main walls permitted a height of seven point zero meters. When I looked at the drawings, it was, it should say seven point six meters. Otherwise, they don't need.
That's correct, we proposed seven point six.
Sorry, the number one should be a height of seven point six?
Yeah.
Is that the public notice that is incorrect?
Yeah.
So we have a problem because that num, we don't have a problem?
At a height of seven point zero?
If she's, if.
If she's saying seven, if she's saying seven point six now, it's actually greater than.
Yes.
So we can't deal with that today.
Through the chair.
No, I mean, that, that's how we received.
To the agent, you said you just approved revised zoning review yesterday, which staff would not have. So has this number changed?
No, the variance number one has not changed. I believe the public notice is not representing the right numbers because the zoning notice that we have clearly states that the proposed front and main rear walls are seven point six. I'm not sure what happened to the public notice.
Well, through the chair, it is the agent's responsibility to check the notice and ensure that it is correct.
So ma'am, what we have here is the public notice is inaccurate. The people who, the neighbors who have, have an interest in this have received inaccurate information. So the public notice is what we go by and that's all we can deal with. And what you're suggesting today is a height that is greater than what is in the public notice.
And through the chair, for the record, to the agent, we just checked your original zoning review that was submitted with this application and the public hearing notice that went out to the public is correct as per your original notice. It looks like your revised notice that you received yesterday has a changed number. It looks like your revised notice that you received yesterday has a changed number.
And it's greater.
And it's.
But that does not.
Would require a automatic deferral for notice.
I do have both the notices with me, and in both cases I see seven point six. I don't know which one you are looking at, one second.
Ma'am, it doesn't matter, frankly, it's an automatic deferral because the public, the public has been misinformed, right? So the public has a right to get a notice that has accurate information, and in this case, they haven't received that. So it's an automatic deferral under the rules of the Planning Act. So we don't have.
Is there any way?
No, we can't amend that, we cannot amend that today. The only thing we can do in front of us today is if what you're proposing has a lesser impact or is a reduced impact relative to the bylaw. In this case, it's a greater, so the Planning Act requires that people receive notification, and in this case, the notification is inaccurate. So you have to be deferred so that you can go back through the process, notify the neighbors with the accurate information.
Through the chair to the agent, unless the agent wishes to delete and remove variance number one altogether, that is another option.
Through the chair, I do have another participant, one of our agent, can he speak on behalf? Answer that question, please. It's Mr..
If you're gonna answer the question that the Deputy Secretary of Treasury just asked, yes, that person can speak.
Uh huh. Okay, thank you.
I don't know whether they want.
Hello, good afternoon.
Hi, your name and address, please, sir.
Yeah, thank you, my name is Mohammed Ali Hassan, I'm the engineer, and also, I'm also one of the Z of this project.
Okay. Do you understand the issue, sir?
Yeah, yeah, I understand the issue, I understand the issues, so, yeah, we can, we can remove the variance one.
Oh. So, so you're not gonna require a height variance?
No, height variance, yeah, we'll reduce, actually, you know that, this is the duplex house, so actually, we can go seven point five as far building code, so this is seven point six. So point, zero point one, we can, we can reduce, yeah.
I, I'm, so I, I think, sir, the panel's a little bit confused because of the way this is jumping around, and I think, to be quite honest with you, the members of the public are a little bit confused as well. I don't think it's fair to either the public or the members of the panel to proceed. I think your best course of action is to defer this and come back with an application which accurately states what you're proposing to seek.
And through the chair to the.
Okay, okay, we have no issue, thank you.
Okay, to the agent, the zoning review that Committee of Adjustment staff have on file for your application is dated March 7th, 2025, and that is the same numbers that are reflected on the current public hearing notice, just for the record.
Okay, sir, so I think our suggestion would be to defer and, and circle your wagons and update your application.
Yes.
Come back, and I think, judging, there are some people here that want to speak to this item, so if as part of that process, it would be helpful, I think, if you have discussions with your neighbors.
Okay, okay, thank you very much, no problem.
Thank you, all right, any further questions, panel? Okay, let's take it into committee. Oh, we have, I'm sorry, we have people to speak, sorry. Yeah, come on down. Well, again, if we're gonna defer, we're not gonna then get into the merits of the case, right? So this is just, I'm just gonna ask you simply whether you're okay with deferral or not.
Oh, that's the, that's it?
That's all I really, because if it gets deferred, it'll come back and you'll have ample opportunity to have a discussion about then. And what I said to the agent was, if he hasn't already, they should be speaking with you guys.
Yeah.
Okay, so to, for the record, your name and address.
Mike Dix, eighty-five Clermore.
And to the question of deferral?
Deferral, yes.
Okay, you're okay with deferral, thank you very much. Good afternoon, sir.
Hello.
Your name and address, please.
My name is Bill Maitland, and I live at ninety-three Clermore Avenue, and I'm in favor of a deferral as well.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Oh, come on down, ma'am. You got the family, yeah. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, I'm Virginia Salazar, my husband.
Angelo, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, so again, we're not gonna talk about the merits of the case today, I just really need to know whether you're okay with deferral or not.
Yes, even if we extended our parking tickets already.
Okay, and it sounds like the agent's gonna have a chat with you folks, so thank you all for coming down today and participating. Thank you all very much. All right, let's go back to the, oh, we're going into committee, does anyone want to move deferral? Okay, Nancy?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I think in this case, with everything we've heard and the sort of confusion and frustration, I think that it makes sense for this to be deferred, to give the agent an opportunity to consult with neighbors and show them the revisions and come back with the accurate numbers.
Perfect, okay, motion by Ms. Omen to defer, seconded by Ms. McCauley, all in favor? You have a deferral, okay.
Did we, did we lose our?
Yeah, I worry that we lost the folks that were here to speak to this last item. Did they, did anyone speak to you as they left? No? Didn't say anything?
Through the chair, there are speakers online for item nineteen as well.
And the agent is still unavailable.
He's finishing up the hearing.
Okay, let's take a ten-minute break, apologize to all those people online again. We will reconvene and hopefully proceed with this item in ten minutes. Okay, we continue, we circle back to item nineteen. Seventy-three North Woodrow, North Woodrow Boulevard. This is an application to construct a new two-story detached building with four residential units, a front porch, rear ground floor decks, and a rear second-story balcony. The existing one-story detached dwelling will be demolished. Committee has before it a copy of location map, plan of survey and plans, tree and site photos of the subject property. We have a staff report from Urban Forestry, there's correspondence and concern from seventy-one North Woodrow Boulevard. There is correspondence and opposition from eighty-four, seventy-one, one oh, eighty-four and seventy-one North Woodrow Boulevard, one oh four North Bonnington Avenue, a thirty-seven signature petition in opposition from owners occupants of Danforth Road, North Bonnington Avenue, and North Woodrow Boulevard, and Zenith Drive.
Hey, through you, Mr. Chair.
We have the agent with us.
Yes, we have the agent online and we have a few speakers online and a speaker here in person to this item.
Great, thank you. Mr. Bencowski? Are you there?
You are unmuted.
Jonathan, are you there?
Oh, my, you know what, I'm actually doing this, I, I, I really apologize, Mr. Chair, committee, community members, everybody listening, I'm, I was just in about an hour and a half hearing downtown that just kept going. My sincere apologies, Mr. Chair.
All right, sir. Well, we're glad to have you.
I, I cannot apologize enough.
There, we, we have had some folks waiting to speak to this item, so we will need a presentation, sir.
Yes, absolutely, and again, I just want to apologize again. If we could.
No, no, I'm not gonna ask that. Go ahead, sir. We, did we lose you again? Okay. Jonathan, you there?
I, I am here, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me?
Okay, we can now. All right, let's.
Okay, my, you know.
Let's neither of us hang up, and if you can proceed with your five-minute presentation, that would be great.
Absolutely. If we could just bring up the site plan. So the proposal before you.
Jonathan, we keep, we keep losing you. Is, is your.
You know what, Mr. Chair, let me try to go somewhere else. I'm, I'm actually trying to do this outside of the Toronto Chambers. You know what? Just bear with me, let me try to. I think I bothered. Mr. Chair, I believe I bothered Sabrina enough today with my hour and a half, which she just had to hear me, so I'm gonna try to jump this directly to my cellphone rather than using the connections. Just bear with me.
Okay.
I'm gonna try to do it through my phone. No, they can't. Mr. Clay just told me to go use your office, because I'm cutting in and out. To my phone, I did it through my phone. Is that better now?
Yes, we can, we can hear you. Okay, are you, are you ready to go?
Yes. Yes, I'm ready to go, and Sabrina told me I could not use her off.
Okay, you, we'll reset the clock for five minutes, and off you go.
Thank you, I'll just bring up the. So the proposal for you today is to construct a new four-story, uh, there is only one variance that is before you today, that is for lot coverage. If we can zoom in onto the dwelling itself, I, I do want to just address, I did notice in one of the letters from the neighbors for the required setback, the, the actual required side yard setback, under the exceptions, is point four or five meters. So I just wanted to start with that right now. If we could please zoom in on the dwelling itself, I want to go over the built form aspects that are leading, leading to the coverage request that is before you today. So the required side yard setback, as per exception forty-eight, is point four or five meters. As the dwelling addresses the street, the proposed setback is point nine meters at the front, and one point nine two meters as it tapers to the rear. That's important, because when we look at what is leading to this increase in coverage, we are now in excess of both side yard setbacks, um, both to the north as well as to the south. Could we go, please go to the elevation, please? I would just like to now just review the elevation and what is being proposed there, because again, this is just a coverage variance. Simply look at the impact of how that coverage is being appropriated on the land. The, the permitted height that is allowed for this dwelling is ten meters. The proposed height that is before you is eight point nine five meters, some one point zero five meters below. That's fine, that's perfect right there. The permitted main wall height is seven point five meters. The proposed height is six point nine five meters for the main wall height, again, point five five meters below. The building length is as per the zoning bylaw, the building depth is as per the zoning bylaw. So when we take all of these parameters that control really what coverage is and how that addresses the land itself, we are in excess of all of them, specifically those side yard setbacks. To go into the multiplex parameters of South eight twenty-six, I wanted to speak to a, a couple of those, and we could go, we can actually leave. Some of this. Buildings from the streets, again, the prevailing front yard setback is maintained with the proposal, as there is no request, it is the average of both. Another one I'd like to speak to is maximizing the contiguous soft landscaping with. Setback variance, no front yard setback variance, no landscape variance in the front, no landscape variance in the rear. I'd also like to address the large units, which is to be encouraged, all proposed units in this dwelling are four bedrooms or larger. The next one will be, is, sorry, will provide entrances that are safely accessible, and should include, and include one unit that contains multiple bedrooms. In this instance, all proposed units are two bedrooms or larger, and all are visible from the street. I'm gonna hustle up a bit, because I do have somewhere I want to get to. There's no loss, injury to any municipal or private tree, that is not in, that is not an instance. Could we go to the north elevation? One of the big things that the neighbors did speak to is a, a lack of privacy from what is being proposed. Please leave that on, on first. So this would be the right side, which is the south elevation, okay, with the right side being the rear. If we look at where those windows are appropriated on the side, they are in the middle of the dwelling. Go to the next side, please. If we go to here, this is now the north elevation, so the left side would be the rear, there is one window at the rear. Now, the dwelling to the north would essentially fit with their rear wall being where that proposed second-floor window is for the family room. So in terms of overlooking privacy, that would essentially fit with what is on that property to the north. Lastly, very quickly, I'd like to address the new Ontario regulation, that is approved for three units. Yes, this is four units, but if this were to be a three-unit dwelling, this would not even have one variance that is requested before you today, because forty-five percent coverage would be allowed. And, and through you, Mr. Chair, I know Mr. Hugh had it had some words for me before about this in a prior ring, but, but I didn't get a chance to answer it, so I'm gonna kind of use it now to answer. Why I think that is appropriate is because the logic behind increasing coverage for three units to then not allow it for four really doesn't make sense. Province-wide, three units is permitted forty-five percent, yet in the city of Toronto, we can have four units, again, without that coverage being increased. That will be increased, that is coming to forty-five percent. So the logic of, of, we're gonna say, okay, at, at forty-five percent for three units is permitted, but for, for four units, you know, we're, we're only permitted that thirty-three percent, that goes to the evolution of how the city arrived at the, at the no limit on FSI back two years ago. Again, let's, I just want to focus on the covered variance that does not have a built form aspect associated with it. I think that's my time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. We'll hold our questions until after we hear from the speaker. Sir, do you want to come down? Good afternoon, and thank you for waiting. Your name and address, please.
Overlooking, sorry, overlooking into our backyard. And, of course, we, we have concerns with that. It's gonna impact our privacy, that we have our privacy impact and runoff of flooding into our, into our property. My two adjacent neighbors are just as upset so as, as the rest of my neighbors, from what I could see. They're all, they're both upset of what they're proposing to do, invading our privacy in our yard. There's a lot of people that have, there's a lot of people in the neighborhood that have built nice, big, beautiful homes for their family, and we have no problem with that. But the two-story residential unit with ten bedrooms covering forty-three point two percent of the lot is a concern that the whole neighborhood has. They're providing no parking, and again, that's a concern for parking, clearing snow, and picking up garbage, and what have you, having all these additional vehicles in the streets. We have no problem with people building single-family home, the duplex, three-plex, but a four-plex does not belong in our neighborhood. That's, that's a feeling I get for, I went around collecting signatures and talking with neighbors, and they're all very upset and worried about what's gonna do to the neighborhood. I bring in, allowing a four-plex, I setting precedence going forward. They worry about the, you know, the excessive traffic and the value of their homes, and, and again, the privacy of my neighbors, not just me, but it's affecting of five, six of us. There's no trees, and they're sitting at the, at the balcony, like on the second level, overlooking my yard, my neighbor's yard, and that's, and that's a concern for us. We just, you know, after all these years of work, working and paying off and fixing our house, and now retire, we like to be able to go in the backyard and just sit there, play with the kids, and relax, not having, we don't know who's gonna be living there, people overlooking into our property. It's, it's like invasion, invasion of privacy. That's all. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, the speaker? Yes, Basif? Hang on a sec, sir, we have a question for you.
My son's supposed to do this, but he had to go. He's a better speaker than me.
Oh, you did fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, sir. Sir.
Yes.
Please give me two concern that you have, two, only two.
Well, my first concern is that second-story balcony invading our privacy and my neighbor's privacy, which we really enjoy more than anything else. Our backyard is like, it's everything for us in the summer to, you know, relax there, and the other concern is the size of the building, like what they want to, you know, go to forty-three point something percent coverage. The last of our green space, you know, the, the runoff of excessive, you know, water, because it hasn't nowhere to absorb, like losing all the landscape, all the green. And, you know, mainly those two, and being a, a four-plex, ten bedrooms, four families, additional, I mean, I'm sure it'd be a lot of people in the backyard, a lot of extra noise, and, and extra vehicles, and, and what have you. It's a residential place, like single-family homes. Some of them are big, but still single-family homes. And that's a, that's a feeling I get, not just me alone, but my neighbors and people that I talk to on the street. They just, you know, this is gonna set precedence, you know, for, for them to keep doing this, knocking down single homes and building this big monster four-plexes. I don't think they belong there, you know. I'm all, I'm all, I'm all for people to.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we have folks online?
Indigo, you've been unmuted?
Thank you.
Hi there.
My name is Indigo. Hi there, Mr. Chair. This is my first time before this committee. You just spoke with my father-in-law. My husband was also there earlier today.
Okay, so like, before you start.
We have a site to casual.
Sorry for interrupting. Can I get your address, please?
My address is twenty-one ninety-one Young Street.
Okay, so you don't necessarily live nearby?
I do not. I'm a licensed paralegal, and like I indicated, my father-in-law and my husband were there today.
Ah, okay.
I also prepared the submissions that you should have.
So you're speaking on behalf of your father-in-law and husband?
Uh, I am.
For that gentleman's address. Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you very much. So, if, I, I don't know if it's pertinent to, like, you know, we have the submissions, I believe it's objection letter bracket one, as well as the petition with the numerous signatures from the community that were collected since we received the notice. I, the submissions reference the official plan of bylaws as well as decisions of this committee as well as the Toronto Appeal Body, which in my view ought to be persuasive in the decision of the committee. A number of residents have taken time out of their day to speak to the impacts. I would like to address a substantive basis for our objection. I know that the agent for the application spoke in respect of the side yard setbacks. My reading of the bylaws and the amendments may very well be incorrect, but based on my reading of the bylaws, my understanding is that they would be required to have a minimum setback of one point two meters, where there is only in fact a setback of point nine meters, I believe, at the first half of the property closest to the road. Our view is that the applicant would need to seek a further variance on that basis. However, I of course defer to this committee in being the experts. The other basis for our substantive objection is that it doesn't succeed on the four-part test, or the four tests required by the Planning Act. To give some context, and as I'm sure the resident speaks to, the massive footprint permitted in this application is a variance of approximately twenty-five percent over the maximum that by the bylaws of, I believe, thirty-three percent, bringing it to over forty percent, which I'm sure, certainly heard those figures repeatedly, exclusive of the not insignificant porches, balconies, patios, additional street parking, required to accommodate the ten, ten bedrooms hosted by the property. In our view, it's clearly an overdevelopment and unsuited to the law. A four-plex of this scale has no place in a community of single-story bungalows with minimal lot coverage. It is our position that the application must fail, as it is contrary to the intents and objectives of both the official plan and the bylaws, which I have referenced in some detail in my submissions. The community members have and will provide their personalized accounts and further into our position that approval of this application is undesirable for the appropriate development and use of the land, including their very real and untrivial concerns about the detrimental impact it will impose on their privacy and enjoyment of their properties, and environmental impacts, including concerns of flooding on account of the substantial ground coverage, concerns that it will diminish the character and cohesion of the community, safety concerns, and the potential to reduce property values. We also question the necessity of such a development, given the ongoing. Other basis for our substantive objection is that it doesn't succeed on the four-part test or the four tests required by the Planning Act. To give some context, and as I'm sure the resident will speak to, the massive footprint permitted in this application is a variance of approximately 25% over the maximum that by the bylaws of, I believe, 33%, bringing it to over 40%, which I'm sure you've heard those figures repeatedly, exclusive of the not insignificant porches, balconies, patios, additional street parking required to accommodate the 10 bedrooms hosted by the property. In our view, it's clearly an overdevelopment and unsuited to the law. A fourplex of this scale has no place in a community of single-story bungalows with minimal lock coverage. It is our position that the application must fail, as it is contrary to the intents and objectives of both the official plan and the bylaws, which I have referenced in some detail in my submissions. The community members have and will provide their personalized accounts and further into our position that approval of this application is undesirable for the appropriate development and use of the land, including their very real and untrivial concerns about the detrimental impact that will impose on their privacy and enjoyment of their properties, environmental impacts, including concerns of flooding on account of the substantial ground coverage, concerns that it will diminish the character and cohesion of the community, safety concerns, and the potential to reduce property values. We also question the necessity of such a development, given the ongoing development of condos and ample renting opportunities already in the community. Finally, it's our position that the application must fail, as the variance is not minor. The test for whether a variance is considered minor is whether there's an unacceptable adverse impact, which the residents have and will have attested to in their oral and written submissions. It's our position that, given the overwhelming objection of the community, that the application must be denied, as it is one flaw, as it does not seek the variance required for the side lock setbacks, and two, the setback was at least on one of the four tests. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I just want to clarify with respect to your comments on the side yard setback. We do not have a variance before us for side yard setbacks, so this application conforms to the bylaw with respect to side yard. Okay? Any questions?
I was, if you could indulge me, I know that Mr. Benkowsky, he referred to the exemption that would apply in respect of the side yard setbacks. My reading of the bylaws and the plans is that it doesn't comply. I'm sure I'm missing something, but if someone could direct me to the exemption.
Well, I mean, we're not going to get into that today. All I'm going to tell you is that we don't have a variance before us with respect to side yard setback. And it's been reviewed by the examiner, so we're going to have to accept that, that the side yard is in compliance with the bylaw. All right, we can have, we have another speaker?
Through the chair, we have the Speaker of John Webster, registered to speak for 84 North Woodrow Boulevard, as well as a few other speakers at that same address. So just a reminder, it's, you have to share the five minutes. It's one speaker per household.
Okay, who do we have online? Sorry, sir. If you're trying to, we can't hear you.
Hi, this is Tracy. Can you hear me? Tracy Chong at 84 North Woodrow.
Yes, we can, Tracy. So are you speaking on behalf of the four people listed here, or are you sharing the time?
On the household for now.
Sorry, you're speaking on behalf of everyone?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, ma'am, you have five minutes.
My concerns are whether, sorry. We're logged in on several devices, so I'm hearing feedback.
We can hear you.
Okay, so my concern is that the plan does not address parking. If the property has 10 unit, or bedrooms in it, and we're seeing a trend on the street where bedrooms are being rented, not the actual full unit, there could be, you know, 10 separate occupants in there with, you know, vehicles each. And I don't see in the plans, like, a driveway or a garage or anything like that. So I'm concerned, or I'm wondering where, where is the plan for everyone to park if they all have vehicles? I've mentioned in my letter, you know, garbage, excess garbage, like if there's going to be excess bins on the street, it's going to impact, you know, snow removal. And like the previous speaker just mentioned, like, I do have concerns with, you know, just density in the neighborhood as a whole, and whether this multi-unit property is going to benefit the neighborhood when there are, you know, condos going up on every corner of our block. Was there any other concern? That's pretty much it for now, sir.
Great, thank you very much. Is there any questions? All right, thank you. We can get, is there one more speaker? No, that's it? Okay. If we can get Mr. Benkowsky back?
I'm here, Mr. Chair. And again, I do want to apologize to the neighbors for keeping everybody waiting. I'm very sorry for that. Okay, first, I'd like to address the individual from 2191 Young Street. I thank her for putting in those T-Lab decisions. A couple of them actually were my cases, had successful increases in coverage, fairly similar to this one. So I would urge you to maybe read those decisions on the side. In terms of the idea of desirability, we know that the zoning bylaw permits four units. We know that the OP policies, as well as the SaaS policies that support, that are encouraging four units. Where we're in a little bit of a gray area right now is where the province has permitted 45% for three units. The city of Toronto has not caught up. Essentially, in my opinion, the desirability of, again, having a dwelling this size that's compliant with the three units the province has shown us is, again, there. That's not changing. To add the extra unit, in my opinion, increases the desirability, because these are family-style units. These are not small units. Again, these are family-style units. If we were to remove the one unit, the house could be larger. The house could be higher. The house could be closer to the side yards. I understand we're not there yet. But again, speaking to the desirability, and again, the triple down from the province, again, is telling us that that's where they want that to go. So the highest order of the planning documents, our new provincial planning statement, and what is being encouraged through there, again, through the Oreg, is telling us this is the desirable number, is a coverage at 45%. Because again, and we had this issue before, where Scarborough had not caught up with the exceptions of the FSIs that were two years ago excluded throughout the city of Toronto and small parts of Atobicoke. This new Oreg caught up to that and said, listen, those exceptions are gone. It's not possible at some points to allow for density like this, but then have a parameter of 33%. And that's why the province has said, at three units, you can have 45%. We will get there as the city. We're just not there yet. But I think that speaks to the desirability. And I think that also speaks to the higher-level planning authority telling us that this is what they want. I'd like to just address parking. Three minutes away, you know, 200 meters of Danforth Road with transit along it. The city has outlawed or has no requirements for parking citywide, be it for a 100-story condo building or a single-family residential dwelling. There is no parking requirements citywide for residential, short of accessible and visitor. But on a four-plex, a three-plex, a duplex, or a single-family dwelling, those visitor parking requirements do not comply. In terms of the rainwater runoff, as I spoke of in my opening, we are significantly in excess. Oh, sorry, I did want to address the individual from 2191. Because she's right, in the actual text of the zoning bylaw, it is 1.2 meters. But when you go to that exception, it speaks to a 0.45 meter side yard setback. So again, even as we addressed North Woodrow, we've gone from that 0.45 to the 0.9, again, and it tapers back to the 1.2 meters. In terms of the rainwater runoff, again, 0.91 meters and 1.2 meters is a significant setback. I'm not concerned about being able to retain any type of rainwater. The back is extensively landscaped. The front is extensively landscaped. In terms of the idea of, the balcony is permitted at the rear on the second floor. In my opinion, that's really no different than having an all-glass back window, which, again, people interpret very differently than having a balcony. But again, that balcony is permitted in its location. That balcony is permitted in its size for that unit on the second floor. If you give me one more second, just let me review my notes. Oh, yes, and as you did mention, Mr. Chair, this was done by a zoning review. This was not done through a zoning waiver. Parking would be provided on the street, as there are no parking, no-no parking signs, and it is not a permitted area. Again, I would say the unacceptable adverse impact, again, as 2191 spoke of, of having a larger dwelling that covers 45% of the lot, that could be higher, that could be closer to the side yard setbacks, than what we are proposing would have a greater impact than what is before you today. I think that's it, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Panel, any questions? Nancy?
Hi, Mr. Benkowsky. I'm just looking at the house, the number 77, and then looking at your design. In a, from a visual context, how do you think that your proposal compares to that house? It's kind of an older house that looks similar to some of the older-style apartment buildings that are in some of the neighborhoods in the city. So I'm just trying to get a sense visually, what it would, how it would compare.
That is, it's kind of a fairly similar look, just appropriated in a different manner. Okay? Whereas, again, along North Woodrow to the north and the south, they do have similar buildings to this. Again, we, the, I think the issue, you know, Torontonians are having is understanding that these fourplexes are permitted. It's going to come, this is the type of living that is all throughout the world. You know, we're very, I don't want to say lucky, but, you know, in Toronto, the idea of owning a house and living in a single-family dwelling is very unique. That doesn't happen in most parts of the world due to the cost of living. We're getting to that point now, where the small walk-up condominium, sorry, small walk-up apartments, which, again, one exists on the corner of Danforth and North Woodrow. That's historically been there. It is a look that is going to come. And again, the proposal before you is drastically below the permitted height, is drastically permitted below the permitted main wall height, and is in excess of the side yards.
Which brings me to the height question, again, comparing to number 77. Your roof looks a little bit more pitched, but would you say it's pretty close to the same height, again?
Absolutely. Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, Miss Omen. Again, we have a slight pitch, and even given that slight pitch, we're well over a meter below the permitted height. So again, would be very similar build form for what is there. Again, it's just wrapping our heads around this now being a single-family houselet that contains four units.
Okay, and final question, are any of these units going to be affordable units? Or are they just going to be market price?
They would be market rent. The affordability threshold is tough because it goes area to area within the city based upon CMHC guidelines. I'm not sure if they're going to look for CMHC funding. If they did go for CMHC funding, they would be subject to that. But through you, Mr. Chair, Mrs. Omen, I can't pretend to say yes, because I'm not sure of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Asif?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, sir. I have a very simple question, and I would ask Mr. Benkowsky to be very specific. Sir, you have one variance in front of us. And the maximum you are allowed under the zoning bylaws is 33%. And you're saying 43.2%. Sir, I can understand there is a tolerance to 33%. You can be a little bit higher. But you are 24, 25% higher, going way out of allowable maximum. How can I understand that this is a reasonable variance that we should approve?
Absolutely. Mr., through you, Mr. Chair. Could we bring up the site plan, please? So through you, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Clunt, you are correct. We have one variance that is before you today, which is for lock coverage. I don't want to harp on it too much, but again, if this were a three-unit building rather than a four-unit building, we would not be here in the building. It could be larger. Larger, not smaller. If I remove one unit, the building could be larger. So if we look at coverage, the, in general intention and purpose of the zoning bylaw for coverage is a couple of things. One is to make sure it's not covering too much of the land, and it's not taking away from amenity space or encroaching into the yards of other neighbors, really to the detriment of them. So if we look at what we have here, we know our front yard, or, sorry, our front wall of the building is the average of the two adjacent properties, again, as per the zoning bylaw. If we look at our side yard setbacks, 0.45 meters is what's required. We are at 0.9 on both sides at the front, and it comes in to 1.2 meters at the rear. Another aspect that controls coverage, building length. We are in compliance with the building length provision of 17 meters. The last provision would be the rear yard setback of being seven and a half meters. We are at 11.33 meters. So again, coverage is essentially what the borough sees. So the aspects of the zoning bylaw that specifically address coverage, we are well in excess of all of them. Now, even taking into account then the impact of the built form of the dwelling, we are well under the proposed, we are well under the permitted main wall height, and we are well under the permitted overall height of the building. So that mass, that mass that you see is the vision of the zoning bylaw. Okay? Now, I don't want to, again, keep harping on it, but again, one unit being removed, the same built form could be larger on the property. So the impact would be greater. So to take what the coverage controls, and again, we can even see the adjacent houses to the north, it, again, is not as deep, right? But again, how coverage is proportioned on a property, we could bring the sidewalls in at the front and still extend the same distance into the rear yard and taper it the opposite. Because again, we're in excess of those side yards. So we have to look at where the coverage is being deployed on the lot and how that's a function of every other built form envelope that controls that.
Okay. Asif, that good? Anyone else? Just a quick question. So the gentleman who lives directly behind was concerned about overlook. And I was just looking at your second store, second-floor floor plan, and the balcony serves what looks like the family room and a master bedroom. And the family room implies more active use of the balcony. So there may be a legitimate concern from the neighbors about overlook from that balcony. Is there anything you can suggest that might make the neighbor that lives behind feel a little bit better about privacy and overlook?
Yeah, if we can, can we bring up the rear elevation, please? It would be drawing number A7. The other way, the other way, yeah, correct, please. There we go. There's A7. So, Mr. Chair, a couple of things. I can appreciate the concern. I would just like to go back to, there is no request for the size, the location of that balcony. It is permitted. You are also 100% incorrect in thinking that the family room is located there, which has a more active use. I would go back to two things. One, the 11.33 meter rear yard setback. I would also say, Mr. Chair, even if that balcony were to be removed, that balcony is only 1.8 meter projection, okay? I would actually say that the balcony overlook, sorry, overlook would be worse if I didn't have the balcony there, because I wouldn't have glass. We could have a condition of that being frosted glass, which would essentially mean, as you're sitting in that family room, you wouldn't be able to see through that frosted glass into the neighbor's rear yard, rather than it being open where you could sit and see. Because again, even if that balcony were not to be there, there's nothing that would prevent that from being an entire glass wall, which in my opinion would actually have more overlook, because that would be year-round overlook. We would really only access that balcony for, you know, four to five months of the year. So what I could suggest is we make sure that that second-floor balcony has frosted glass, which would prevent somebody that is inside, right? Because if you think of our line of sight from sitting, you would have to look down to look into your adjacent neighbor's yard. That would then prevent that from somebody sitting inside and being able to look into their rear yard. So that could be a condition of approval if the committee wishes so.
Yeah, I think that's not a bad idea. I mean, it's not the perfect solution, but I agree with you. If you're sitting in the family room and watching TV, maybe it helps provide a little bit of privacy. And even if someone was to put a chair out on the balcony and sit, then the frosted glass would at least shield both them and their ability to kind of peer into people's backyard. So I think that might be a reasonable solution to, you know, the concern about overlook. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Let's take this in the committee. Anyone want to start?
Yeah, I'd like to start. I see why we had to wait for Mr. Verkowsky. He's become very, very durable. And I appreciate that he is trying to sell us on this proposal. I have some problems with this. that he is trying to sell us on this proposal. I have some problems with this. The, I'm going to say, as Mr. Verkovsky has said, this uh proposal for fourplexes is only two years old. It is got growing pains. The province has said no three, but Toronto has said four. So we're still dealing with four as uh, as the pains. The other part is Woodrow, uh, similar to almost all the other local roads in Scarborough, has no permit parking and no overnight parking. So we're getting eight units here, or um, four units here with no parking and no provision for, for where they can park. Presumably, everyone is going to use the subway that hasn't arrived yet. The, the concern I have, and I appreciate what Mr. Verkovsky's doing. He's a professional planner. He has appeared before uh various tribunals. We waited for him because he was in front of a tribunal uh today. So he's very experienced and quite slick with what he's saying. The, I would ask that we bring up on the overhead the drawing for the basement unit. Okay, thank you. The drawing for the basement unit, if you look at it, it's identical on the north side and the south side, except if you did the north side and changed that living and, and dining area and kitchen and took out the recreation room, I don't know what's the living room versus a recreation room, and I don't know what a cocktail par- bar is versus a kitchen, but it's identical. However, if he puts in the identical there, same doors, same bedroom, same bathroom, identical, he gets five dwelling units, not four. And I think what we're seeing here is a very experienced developer planner pushing the envelope. We had uh duplexes permitted two years ago for fourplex. What we see in front of us is fiveplexes. What we also see in front of us is an increase of ten percent coverage from thirty-three to forty-three. I think this application is pushing the envelope much too, too far, and I would recommend refusing.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else? Nancy? Sure you are.
Okay, I'll, I'll just say this. I, I'm, I'm on the fence because I, I share the frustration of many people that come before us um with the changes that have come into neighborhoods in this city. Um, having said that, um, fourplexes are permitted, and I believe I said at the last mi- uh, last meeting that there is a pilot project for six plexes in one of the areas in Scarborough. So the ink hasn't even dried on the four. The city's already looking at six. And I will say that from some of the other designs I've seen before us, I, the, the design of this one, I think, is fairly sensitive to the neighborhood in terms of the look and feel of it. Um, I do um agree with my colleague, uh, you know, parking, parking issues. Uh, there, but there seems to be a, a, a will or a, a, for lack of a better word, that, that seems to think everybody's gonna run and get on transit. So a lot of things are being approved without parking. And um, so I'm on the, I'm on the fence, um, and I'm gonna defer to my colleague next to me, Mr. Howe, if that's okay, Mr. Chair.
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll do the deferring here. Eric.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I'm leaning towards uh my colleague, Ms. McCauley's point of view. Uh, we only have one variance here, sure, but uh, the variance is requesting uh about thirty percent increase to the lot coverage. So from thirty-three to forty-three point two, about thirty percent more. Um, to me, this is substantial increase for a relatively small lot. Um, if you look at the aerial view, it's a very small parcel. So to me, it does not look minor in nature. Uh, that's number one. Number two, I'm also not satisfied the proposal is desirable um for the development of the land or the neighborhood. Uh, there is no arrangement for parking at all. Um, from an aerial view, the unit is two houses down from an intersection. Um, occupants and visitors of the property will no doubt require parking, and they will be congregated near the intersection. And I don't think that is safe nor, and, and I think will create nuisance for the neighborhood. Um, it is also worth noting that uh the existing house currently has a long driveway. Um, that seems to be able to accommodate two, three cars, but with the new proposal, that will be taken away. Um, so it doesn't, you know, the, the redevelopment seems to be making the parking issue worse. Um, I appreciate the city uh policy encourages affordable housing and building fourplexes, uh, multiplexes. Um, however, I'm just not satisfied, given the requested increase is not minor and the parking issue, I'm just not satisfied that uh holistically this is uh, this is desirable and that meets the four tests of the Planning Act. Um, I do wanna also note, uh, I appreciate the uh agent's comments about the ARU regulation applying to three uh residential units. Therefore, it should apply to four. Uh, I would just note that uh as a committee member, an independent committee, I have to work with the rules and uh laws before me. I can't speculate what policymakers will or will not do tomorrow. Um, so uh my hands are bound on that aspect, and I have to work with what is currently available.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna take a contrary view to my colleagues on this one, um, and I'll sort of explain why. Um, in this case, we have one variance before us, and it's, you know, it's coverage, FSI, whatever. It's really about uh massing um on the property. Uh, but this is a property that, or a, a proposal that uh is less than the permitted length, less than the permitted height. And if you go up and down Woodrow, Woodrow seems to be, to be in a state of transition because, yes, you do have, you know, typical bungalows that you often see in these neighborhoods, but you also have a number of large two, two-and-a-half story uh new builds along there. So in terms of massing, uh, I don't think this necessarily is inconsistent with what's happening, uh, some of the changes and some of the transition that's happening in this area. And we, I take your point about, you know, not everyone takes the subway, but um, you know, neighborhoods that are um, and it's not really the subway, but neighborhoods that are adjacent to higher-order transit and Danforth is, is one of those, uh, are the neighborhoods, I think, that can and should be accepting a little bit more density. Um, council has been pretty clear uh about this, whether, and I think the public is still, you know, racing to catch up with that. But council has been pretty clear about uh introducing additional density into existing established neighborhoods. And there's a really good reason for that, is that those neighborhoods have the amenities, and they have the infrastructure, and they have the ability to accommodate more residents. And I think this is a neighborhood that, given its proximity to Danforth and other amenities and parkland, um, can do that. Um, I, I don't think the design is necessarily uh offensive. You know, I think, you know, notwithstanding the fact that the fourplex versus threeplex has some con, um, you know, I don't think the massing alone is sufficient. If this had both the massing and length and height, which we do see in other parts of the city, those kinds of proposals, if it offended the bylaw in a number of different ways, then maybe this might not be an appropriate proposal for this parcel of land. But this is really uh only just the one um, the one variance. And uh, to me, you know, relative to the rest of the development, I see that as being fairly minor. Uh, in part because, as I say, the massing is such that it conforms with height and length and, and frankly, side yard setbacks is, is permitted. So I don't see this one, nobody wants a large building, nobody wants additional rental accommodation in the neighborhood, but quite frankly, that's the direction that the city is taking. That's the direction that council is trying to accomplish. And introducing these kinds of um gentle density into existing established neighborhoods, while difficult, and I understand that people uh are concerned, um, is the direction that council wants to take. Um, and I think this is consistent with where the city, what the city is trying to achieve in terms of uh adding more accommodation, rental accommodation in a crisis where we need more of it. So, you know, a long-winded way to go about saying, but I think this is a suitable application. So, um, if no other comments, I'll look for-
I'm ready to just say, I, I disagree with you. Um, it is just a density issue, thirty-three to forty-three. It's only a ten percent increase. What it also recognizes is, as I said, if you look at the plans, he's got four units. But they plan to change this to five units is identical. So he can do, yeah, he can do-
I, I, so I'm, I'm doing me a nerve, but I, I, you mentioned that earlier. I'm, I was confused about that, so-
Okay, take a look at the basement plan. That's what I was addressing.
Right now, but we only have an application for a fourplex, not a fiveplex.
True, because the basement uh design says that the recreation area and bar area belongs to someone else. We don't know. But if you look at the basement design, it's identical to what's on the other side of the unit. It's identical to what you go up the area. I, I think in some cases, we've got developers that are pushing the envelope a little bit too much. Why can't he meet the zoning bylaw? Why do we have to have from thirty-three percent to forty-three percent coverage? Yes, he's used every inch of the property.
Fair enough. So, and if, if, you know, again, we can debate this in a cal, because if you wanted to make a motion, that's fine.
Okay, what we've got here is supposed to be a variance. What we're supposed to be looking at, is it minor? Is it appropriate? Does it comply with the official plan? And does it uh comply essentially with the zoning bylaw? I would say on those four issues, the answer is no.
Okay. Uh, then are you making a motion?
I'll make a motion. The motion is that this application be refused.
Okay. Motion to refuse by Ms. McCauley. Do I have a seconder? Mr. Ho, all in favor? All opposed. Uh, that motion carries. The application is refused. Thank you. Uh, that concludes today's session. Uh, we are adjourned at five oh two. You're welcome. Um, thank you.
Thank you, panel members. Turn off your microphones and videos, please. Thank you, everyone.